The city ordinance.
No, we're not ready.
We're not ready yet. Oh, we got that flag time, right?
Soon be time, there you go.
Cool, him on. I don't know how we'll ever go back to being regular people.
I don't see that having.
Why should you never wear your.
Right now.
It is. The area a lot into it.
Although I have time to get back into the 28th. Yes, it's just, it's not comfortable.
28, only kidding.
Going to YouTube?
73?
Yeah.
You're gonna ban it? Did you get banished?
Yeah.
Ready? No?
Send example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, let me do it.
Larry, you have a new home.
Huh?
Corner. Right there, your own table.
Next thing, just, just quick.
There we go.
Larry, we said that we go in three minutes.
That's good.
Oh, I forgot that description. And we heard that. Hello, this is your city council workstation for Monday evening 22nd, 25th. And always can also start reading and if you need an agenda, then you won't be able to. Alright, having said those things, let's go to the order of things and are you up for the public comment now?
I signed up for the public comments.
Okay, so let's skip right down to the public comment because. And Jeanne has the mic, I want you to know that. So we double over public comment right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, up here? Still 6 feet away.
Okay, Jeanne Woods, representing Little Theater on the Bay and the Liberty Theater. And I'm just here to give you a brief update on our Phase 4 construction. Scott Partney has been working so well in the south end of our building to build. It's about a 2,000 square foot construction, set construction area that we use for our workshop, green room, and an extra little restroom for the cast and crew. And we'll cut a hole into that wall of the existing building and we'll just be able to move all our stuff in from the outside right onto the stage. It's gonna be fabulous. So my request is part of the Urban Renewal Reimbursement Program. And I think you have it in front of you there. It was the initial invoice from Scott Partney for a little over 52,000. And so our request was for 26,179 something 39, something like.
Are you like, oh, but you're leaving.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready to reopen?
No, okay, so that's the other part of this, isn't it? Our theater is dark right now for safety reasons. We need to put the cleaning protocols into place before we do reopen. In the meantime, we've already hosted one online event last Friday and it was fabulous. And we partnered with a restaurant downtown in Coos Bay. And so we had lots of people viewing the singing and entertainment that our theater does so well. So our next online entertainment will be in place of, you know, what we would normally do for Opry. So July Jubilee weekend, we're getting lots of same singers, you know, that you're used to on stage and some old favorites like Bobby Bowlin. I don't know if anyone remembers Bobby Bowlin, but he used to play the fiddle back when he was seven years old. Now he's all grown up. So it's a lot of fun. And we want to give our, you know, patrons and the whole community something to look forward to. So it's easy, technology, right?
Did you, you'll stream those Facebook or?
It's YouTube premiere. Yeah, that's our platform. It worked so well. Nathan and Hannah Kaler were the emcees last time. Excellent entertainment. This is a great community. Lots to look forward to. So, so we're dark, but we're not off. We're not offstage. Yeah.
Any questions? This is very proud.
Yeah. Yeah. We do have a grant written for replacing the Moorish domes on top already. A historic theater grant. So we may see that in the near future. Big domes, bike poles, tenants on top. And it will make a big statement for North Bend. So it's exciting. Yeah, I know. I know, we're gonna get a lot of. So anyway, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to have.
Yeah.
I'll refrain from saying a lot, but. I would like for the city to recognize the fact that there was a resident here that did go clean up the mess on Broadway. That's been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks. And no one bothered to get those people out of there. We've had them sleeping in my front yard. I've had them sleeping in the neighbor's porch. But nobody can do anything. That's the shame. A real shame. And we have a private citizen that went out to the highway to go clean it up because she was sick and tired of the mess and driving by it. What if she would have been poked by a needle? Or picked up any other contagious disease out there? Who's gonna pay for her medical bill? I mean, this went on too long. Way, way too long. But Howard knows about it. I've sent letters to Howard, to Jim, Rob's got them. Uh, I don't know if I got any to you, Larry. But it's been a mess. An absolute mess. Pardon?
It's a revolving mess.
There is. Where are our city ordinances to take care of this? I mean, if this is the case that you have no jurisdiction there, why don't I stop my garbage service and go throw it all out in the street? What about every resident that lives here? They can throw it out in Broadway, what can you do? I mean, there are laws and if there's a law, every law has a loophole. And I don't understand why this stuff continues to go on and on. And it's not just there, there's messes occurring all over. I mean, 30 years, I've been here 34 years. This is a very, very nice town, but I see changes going on with it that are not for the good. And you have sitting, sleeping on a doctor's porch. Not once, but twice I called it in, haven't turned in. So these people are gone now, but the young gal that came out to clean it up, Howard's got her email and name. A lot of these guys, the city needs to do something to recognize the act that she did. I mean, that was very nice on her part to come out there and do it.
Keith, you have any thoughts on what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do?
I got a lot of thoughts.
Yeah, I know.
First of all, in terms of trespassing, we did finally get notice from the Department of Transportation that that is their jurisdiction and gave us a letter indicating that we're allowed to trespass anyone who's not just transversing through. However, the fact that the jail currently is not operating, they won't take anyone. So we can issue a citation and order them to appear. And quite literally, some people are wiping their rear end with a citation and throwing it in the officer's face. Literally, that's what they're doing. And there is, there is no other recourse. All we can do is issue citations and. We call the jail every time. We call the mobile response team from Coos Health and Wellness. It sometimes can assist if the person has said or done something that by law allows them to be admitted. However, very seldom, these people know the system. They know what they should say and shouldn't say. And we keep going out and we will keep going out and we'll keep talking with them and doing everything within the power of law that allows us to do it. Well, we can't do anything illegal. We can't use force against someone we're not gonna arrest. So on top of that, the district attorney, their staff has been cut and we received notice from them that everything below a class A misdemeanor and even some class A misdemeanors will be treated as violations. So they'll turn those cases back around to us and we should issue citations for those cases as well. I wish we could do way more than we could. I really do. This is what we exist for, to take care of these issues. And in every possible direction, our hands have been high.
It's gotta be terrible on morale, but of course.
It's incredibly frustrating.
It's gotta be horrible.
I have a question about the stretch of that you're talking about is the curve around on Broadway. And are you saying that that jurisdiction there is the organ part of transportation?
Part of it and part of it is private. But, but quite frankly, any of the trespasses that we have, unless, and even as an example, I think I talked about it in our last meeting. But we had a person who was actively attempting to break into someone, someone's house on Sherman Avenue. Cut the home line, knew that it was occupied by the resident and was ready to make entry when they were caught by our officers, confessed to the crime. The jail was called and the jail said, no, we will not take them. They were brought down here, they were issued a citation and released because we have no other. There's nothing else we can do. That is absolutely crazy. In 28 years of policing, I've never seen something that crazy. And I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what to do. There's, there's nothing else to do.
We, we have what, 200 cells? In the county? And we only have 40 occupied?
They have no money, the staff there, the staff of the other parts, county's out of money too. That's where the problem was. They got too open right now, I think maybe, but they're talking about closing ones. And COVID's still. Yeah, COVID was still an issue.
So you're saying you go and trespass a person, ask them to leave. They'll just come right back? Because I was, and was there overnight camping that was happening there?
Yeah, there's party on the street, they're living there.
And then who, then whose responsibility, it sounds like the citizen came and like cleaned that up. You can ask the person to leave, they can come back, their hands are tied. Then whose responsibility is to clean up the trash that they left behind?
That's something we're gonna have to determine as the property owner's responsibility. I tried to get ODOT out there, we're gonna clean it up on Monday.
It's like such a dangerous spot that right on that corner.
I did see an email on Sunday.
Yeah, it's a, and that's another thing when you say a dangerous spot.
It's a horrible.
You guys ought to go out there and sit sometime. Just go sit in the Sizzler parking lot right there where they have the cardboard container. And listen, you'll hear guys in their cars, trucks, the minute they come down there to hit that curve to go around it, they floor it. And what about the people if there was somebody out in the street crossing it? I mean, yeah, it, it's a dangerous curve.
Call it a dead man's curve or not.
It's a very dangerous curve because it, it happens all the time where they're out there flooring it, going around.
Did I hear you correctly though, it's not necessarily an ordinance issue, it's the jail? There's no place to take them if you were to cite someone?
Correct, they will not.
And our ordinance allows them to cite them, right?
Correct, and state law allows them to cite, allows us to. State law technically allows us to physically arrest them, but the jail won't take them. And so there was a time where we were physically arresting them and bringing them down here to the PD and we issued them a citation or released them from here. And at least that we advise them 15 minutes to walk back over there again. But our officers were starting to get in antagonistic situations with these people. And frankly, using force against someone who we know is not gonna be held just to issue them a citation is not gonna put us, put the city in a positive legal place. So. We are, I don't know what else to do.
We are still taking action, we are still issuing citations, we are still reporting that information to the prosecutor's office.
And then I'm like rounding up on the follow-up.
Frankly, I, given the memo we received from the DA's office, I don't see those cases getting prosecuted. Until it becomes a more serious crime and someone's assaulted or, or injured, I don't, I don't see it progressing. We're gonna keep doing our job, we're gonna keep issuing citations and keep ordering them to here and quarter. But.
And I have seen people packing food from the thousands over there. Trying to, yeah, so, location, location, location.
You know, it's one thing to be homeless, but it's another thing to be a pig. And those guys were nothing but pigs. The. We mentioned confrontation. When they're sleeping on the porch of a home and you got three young kids inside by themselves, you're gonna end up with somewhere down the road a confrontation. We gonna wait for citizens to get hurt? Or we gonna find a way to put an end to it?
I do know that it's a bit small.
Oh, I'll respond too. And I've already told you what'll happen. But. You know, I. Keep them on show. Okay? Thank you.
You're not the only one that's frustrated. Okay, these are all for Julie.
Let's be read in.
Yeah. We have several. Here in North Bend City Council. Recently we see families trying to compete with golf baskets on the east side of Fairwood Park. We're concerned about this for several reasons. One, as a citizen in North Bend and a family that lives in a park area, we're surprised and were not informed about the plans to alter the park. Two, the thing down in the park over the last few years has made it safer and more family-friendly. Adding in permanent frisbee golf baskets achieves contract. Three, the current frisbee golf park works well for parkgoers as it's because it's separated from the rest of the activities in the park. The frisbee golf park has its own parking area and the golfers are separated from people who go to the park for other activities like picnic, i.e. using the playground or the baseball field. Having these activities separated works to eliminate conflict. Imagine putting a picnic table in the middle of a golf course, this does not work. My family walks around the park and through the limited area almost cage. Few weeks ago, when there was a tournament and we wanted our walk to the park to prove that we had a fairer experience of golf. We were okay with this because it's an occasional event. It is really disheartening to think our walk and pass through the park would be an improvement. There are many, there are often many fitnessers playing around, goers and baseball players. It's lovely when the park is teeming with people from our community, especially who are none of these activities and friends of mine each other. However, the frisbee golfers will offend upon those who'd like to people walk or visit the park. We greatly appreciate some further consideration of the permanent, permanency of these baskets. Thank you Brad and Heather Horn. Okay. This one is from Jim Poplar. From the 783 Mon Street. I wish to go on record that I am opposed to frisbee golf course expansion in Fairwood Park. The park volunteers clear the land all over the park for people to enjoy, not to turn it into a frisbee golf course. Especially the area along the lane that has been cleared with plans to link that into a five-person area. Friesbee golf, in my opinion, will open, should be public recreation development. There are other areas that can be better suited for frisbee golf. By James P. Poplar. This is from Mark Lawrence, 475 Simpson Avenue. I am writing to object to the expansion of the very growth art golf park. As a longtime resident of the community and resident of the city heights, I've always advocated the public recreation. However, my experience with the current district course has not been good. My wife, young children, I walk, bike and use our North Bend parks every day. There is not feel, not feel safe passing through this area. I've been sworn at, at his five feet from my children's head and just don't feel safe using the area with my family. There's usually not a problem since you're on any area of public neighborhood of parks that are safe and secure to you. We love our play areas, but paths, trails, basketball and tennis courts. By expanding the discourse, it does not to the best interest of our community and seems to directly contradict our city's services by only one motto. We are serving very few of these golf courses. It is recommended as joining the local park user. It takes a large footprint of our, of our town's park space, but it does not allow for everyone to use it. I recognize the rights of the current district park's existence and use it. I am willing to avoid that area for the rights to recreate. However, I don't think they have the right to access the entire space from our neighborhood park. The area was a proposed for this golf course is very much has been cleared by volunteers over a number of years because there's many more people who enjoy walking and riding on the path. Thank you for your perspective and concern, Mark and Leo Lawrence. Martha Graber, 454 Simpson. I wish to speak to the council on the following agenda item for issue. I'm appreciative of the very little park and I'm participating in some of the voluntary cleanups from the eastern side. While I respect the interest of the frisbee golfers, the presence is of course there when prohibited by the use. Regular golf courses are not meant for taking walks or picnic events. And frisbee golf courses, these same in this respect. The general public will not feel comfortable walking in space with flying projectiles. The western side would be a much better place for the course because there are fairly no trails on that course. Thank you for your common consideration. I please the best city council on the agenda item for issue. I have not. That's sided by Martha Graber. This is from Jesse Jones. You like this, Jesse? Hello, my name is Jesse Jones and I wanted to write to you to express my support for the very park used golf course and share some of the benefits it will bring our community. As a key partner in the fundraising for this project, my wife and I have fundraised almost $4,000 of donor funds from local businesses, such as the potential for Dell Industries and Napa Auto Parts and started line business therapy. This is just a few of the larger local businesses who have expressed their support and see this park as an opportunity that they have already invested in for the improvement of the scenario. We created the very little Kus Golf fundraiser page on Facebook over a year ago, which is made available for public comment, but as yet we see one complaint. Frisbee golf has been playing the very little park for many years and it's been a part of it delightfully, but that's put on by the city for the benefit, for the benefit of the decade. By installing this frisbee golf course, we will be organizing and creating the same environment of these activities that are already being played. Over a year ago, when that original proposal approved, we took consideration of houses we walk in past and have impressive ownership to make the palpations in our course layout to ensure public safety. Our current plan is to include the signage that clarifies rules and introduces for this golf and improve safety, arraigning awareness of the activities being played. We only hope that we can work together and achieve a solution that is beneficial for everyone. The local support is a fantastic and amazing, and many have voiced their excitement at this opportunity to create this underutilized park and something that should bring more people to the park and to our community. Thank you for your time, please feel free to reach out to us at any time with any questions or concerns. I know we do work together. Signed by Jesse Jones. Signed by Jesse Jones. This is from Alicia Freeman. Three twelve Leclerc, New Orleans. Dear Council. I want North Bend to be a better place to live and visit and I'm glad the Fairwood Park Frisbee Golf Course will make that happen. I was introduced to frisbee golf in 2017 and it's been a way for me to meet new people. Be physically active and have fun. When I moved to the two straight North Bend area, one of the first places where the brilliant other homes was the Ranger Park Frisbee Golf Course. Located in the north of North Bend. Frisbee Golf Course is very little part and I think we're in the city of North Bend in a way. First, frisbee golf is a low impact form of exercise which people law leaders can play. Frisbee golf is a way that our community should be healthier and happier. Secondly, frisbee golf brings the community together. Anyone can play. There are so many who play frisbee golf in our community. Hospital workers, office workers, laborers and so on. Playing disco is a great way to meet new people and make connections with various people in our community. Lastly, it would bring more visitors to the area and reduce the economy. Many people who play disco like to travel to play new course. The addition of the Fairwood Frisbee Golf Course would have sequel disney ones and play. I believe that the Fairwood Park Frisbee Golf Course would be a positive addition to the city of North Bend. Thank you for your time and consideration. Signed by Alicia Freeman. This is from Andrea. Andrea Farm. Who presents at eleven ninety-eight Kingswood Avenue. We recently learned the city of North Bend approved plans for the frisbee golfers to set up a permanent golf basket in Fairwood Park. Frisbee golf is a popular sport and area we have a wonderful frisbee golf course at the northwest and you've seen some highs. There are also frisbee golf courses that you miss and you lose. Occasionally they have terminals where they set up temporary baskets throughout Fairwood Park. Many groups set up and use the park for temporary games, tennis events. I walk the park daily and now for the past sixteen years. I have a view of the park from my kitchen window and have witnessed the increased use by our community as the space has been made available. The nature trail around the perimeter of the park is a major asset used by all ages throughout the day. We appreciate the park department's ongoing efforts to maintain and improving our parks on limited funds. However, we strongly object to having frisbee golf baskets permanently placed in Fairwood Park. We understand that the expansion was approved in April of 2019. We're sorry to be bringing this to the city council at this date, but we feel it's very important to consider alternative sites for the frisbee golf course. We object for the following reason. We want the park to remain a family family and we, and we ask for all ages with open areas and change or a little flower is walking path. The current environment invites families and encouraging groups together. Frisbee golf baskets that find space and return it to nonplace. It would limit the use of the space if there are active players. It makes the space unsafe to walk through. And the southeast corner of the park is a median east to danger trail. The newly cleared number three, the newly cleared flow and peaceful and rare space in our city. The city was held for a new by all the members. Four, volunteers who have done the work desire to have a vote, give a post, put in a pad on picnic tables there. The frisbee golfers didn't help to do the work to create this space. We're hoping the frisbee golfers and the city parks by the words, four to more open areas for extending the frisbee golf course. If you have an O A, that should get you to walk through the existing frisbee golf course while there is active play. I guess you're heavier than normal frisbees and are flying mountains. We are requesting that the North Bend City Council ask the park advisory board to reconsider their decision. Considering Anthony and Ken Charman. And that is the extent of your input. All right, I shouldn't even hear that call. Public comment. Do we have some line?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, Matt, outside of number two, is to review the city council of frisbee yoga agency attendance for June twenty-third, twenty-twenty. All right. Citizens from big state government, who's going to speak to that sir?
Apparently Mr. Briggs is going to line us with a slideshow and discussion of what they believe is a budgetary solution to the city's issues.
Okay. City's funding for community and ecosystem resilience on the Oregon coast.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. We've been approached by the Oregon Coast Management Program and National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to support a proposed estuary and resilience action plan for the city of North Bend. Since when we first got this, none of us knew what it was. We had to look it up, but basically it's management of your shorelines. They have applied for a grant to study the shoreline and provide recommendations to keep the shoreline from further eroding is about all we can get out of it. Doesn't cost us a dime. They do the study, provide us with the information, so staff decided we would support this request.
Resilience is biological resilience?
Yes.
Does it get in the way of economic resilience? You know, putting together a set of things, we're saving all the shoreline everywhere, even though we do have some development aquatic units and development areas.
It is supposed to envelope with the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan and provide a study of what exists today and is supposed to, again, we have industrial lands that are already zoned industrial to utilize those. And that was our initial concern when we read this. What is this? It doesn't, it appears to be a data gathering study which provides what is there and and through public hearings, it will go through the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan to see if there is anything that needs to be adopted to change that, which we have the ability to input at that point. It's basically a data gathering.
So hasn't that been what the partnership for coastal watersheds has been doing?
It is part of.
Creating data, putting that supposedly to improve or update or whatever.
This, this is another step in kind of the same issue.
I, I guess my only thing is, and I appreciate where you come from because that's the way I look at it. Okay, what resilience are we talking about here? And the the suspect part is, is are we creating enough things to ensure that we really can't develop any, any things on that side? You know, we, we come up and I doubt we get it for free and that's good and we get information. And realistically, we try to go where science shows us, you know, the facts and data are. But you don't want to be overly encumbered with.
Again, yeah. It's a data gathering. I'm sure they'll come out with some recommendations. However, it has no force or effect without being adopted in the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. That doesn't mean that the intent can't be there, but it still has to go through a public process. So all it does is give us additional data related to what is there, concerns and or issues. And I'm sure they'll have some recommendations on, on from, we'll call it a different outlook on what should be done there, but it has no other than the data is there if for support if there's are some issues.
Well, and then from my sense, the more data, the better in that particular way. We hate to get to a spot where it was, oh, okay, we have created a roadblock and we won't be able to utilize those things. And I guess also though, as you were going about planning, it would have to be each element adopted by the city of Coos Bay ourselves and the county.
That is correct for it to be incorporated into the estuary management plan. As you're well aware, if you've been observing throughout the years, for example, the wetland issue, what used to be a list of maybe fifty wetland plants is now over four hundred. So this is not necessarily an issue which could have zero impact. I'm not trying to portray it as that and we, your staff was a little bit suspicious of it at first. But it is in essence a data gathering proposal to establish and come up with recommendations on how to manage the estuary fringe area between the water and the development. It doesn't necessarily have any power in itself to restrict any development or any method unless otherwise adopted by the adopting agencies.
Very good. What data are we providing to this?
We're not providing anything. They're basically evaluating. Well, we would provide, I shouldn't say we're not providing anything. Basically, they're evaluating the shoreline system and what is there, the ecosystem that's at the edge of the shoreline, providing that type of data. Probably in hopes that we'd adopt some in the future where the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan adopts some strategies to protect some of these areas if they find particularly high value estuary and fringe elements. That's but nothing is in force unless we adopt it, I guess, or through the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan through county public hearing process.
Disadvantaging without.
We have no disadvantage other than it's a, a support of the Oregon coast resilient, I mean, the Oregon coast management program. It's just more data. What it, what it can be. There's nothing that it hurts us on. What it can do is provide us with some information and some methods to preserve or hopefully work through the regulatory network in the future. That's the advantage. But it can also come up with some impediments to develop them. I'm not, we don't know what the data is going to say, so. They are doing a needs assessment. At this point, it's a.
As long as we get around to these wide.
I also believe that part of the reason they contacted us is in hopes with their future applications for funding. That they show there are more partners than just themselves, so.
Is there a question or comment? Thank you, sir.
Mayor, members of council, we brought this before you a month ago. At that time, you came back to us and said, well, how about annexation of this particular parcel, which is a good idea. Might as well receive the tax revenues too. So we did contact city of Coos Bay. Terrence contacted the city of Coos Bay and we received, there were sounding, well, maybe if you want to trade other property, but otherwise we don't want to give up our right for the property taxes. So unless we were going to give them some property to annex into city of North Bend, then we're not willing to.
They traded for lower land.
They traded for lower land. So we still have, that was a question council brought before. He's now looking at a fifteen. He's trying to get fifteen. The latest I actually received a lot layout today, which was different than you saw in your packet, but it's still not a finished lot layout, but they actually had fourteen lots, but so I wrote it up as fifteen or less. I can't see I'm getting more than that on the property. Sewer system would be ours to maintain, but we collect revenue through storm sewer, same thing, and I suggested a street fee because we don't request the, our state gas tax, which we receive monies from is based on population in North Bend. So actually the state gas tax collected can go to the city of Coos Bay. Even though they'd be for all intents and purposes utilizing only city of North Bend roads, other than if they went towards the Empire District, like Shore Drive. So staff reviewed it. It doesn't create a capacity problem. This is actually the lot development is better traffic wise than the forty-four unit apartment complex or so traffic impact. So I'm not gonna say there's zero. What I showed projected was because there's, sounds a little high to me, but nine point eight seven is what per dwelling unit is what the official Institute of Traffic Engineers says is the average trip generation per dwelling unit. Apartment complex is actually lower at seven point something, but I guess if you have if you all, if all of you drive it, I can see that. I don't think most of us generate ten trips a day, but that is what the official number is from American Institute of Traffic Engineers. Free COVID. Anyway, the request before you is to allow them to open and improve to city standards Connecticut Street to access the property. Realistically, not that it matters to you, they would have to probably do about seven hundred feet of Maxwell Lane to access it from Coos Bay, which probably makes a project marginally, if at all economically feasible. Yeah, our sewer is cheaper. And I don't think they were against annexing in the North Bend. It was, Coos Bay wasn't willing to release the, the property. Any other questions? Do you want to address number eight first? On last Thursday at two PM, we received bids from two local contractors. We had expected Johnson Rock and Night River. Night River only gave sub quotes for paving. Johnson Rock called me earlier in the week and said they looked at their work schedule and couldn't complete it in our stipulated time frame, but received from K and E Excavating, which is Benny Hampstead, if you are not familiar with the recent sale and from Lasky Clifton Inc. to bid or each bidder gave us complete bids. In other words, all the eyes were dotted, teaser crossed. And Lasky Clifton Inc. was the low bidder on this project at four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Both bids were very close. Benny Hampstead was about thirteen thousand dollars higher. My estimate was a little over five hundred and twenty-five thousand for the project, which is split between storm sewer funds, wastewater funds and our street paving funds and it completes Madrona through Maine. We're actually replacing part of the sewer on Maine, extending our storm sewer up to fourteenth court and replacing the part of it that's along the ballpark, which is being choked with the popular tree roots. We're putting it in the streets where we can maintain it. So that's the extent of the project. Bids were good. Well, within our expected range. Other than a minor bid regularity on what looks like on the cleaning and site restoration for a dollar, which I mentioned in my write-up, is also will be holding retain a gentleman at that. which I mentioned in my write-up, is also will be holding retain a gentleman at that point because that's the end of the job. I didn't see any bid loading or anything similar. Staff therefore recommends we award a bid to apparent low bidder contingent upon no valid protest being received in seven days, which is by state law, to Lasky Clifton Inc., an amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. There, we have specifications and requirements for their paving. This is all a new street. In essence, almost entirely, we have to match. I mean, we don't have to match something that's already going up and down. We can, there's state law in essence requires we award a bid to lowest responsive responsible bidders. So unless we have a specific reason, which would be past performance for us or other issue that we don't think they can do the job correctly, we are required by state law to award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. We have on a retainage. That doesn't mean we have to pay that money out till it's corrected to begin with if we don't accept it when if it's a paving issue. And I don't know for sure that they're paving it themselves. They didn't list any subcontractors, but that doesn't prohibit them from having Night River pavement or somebody else paved it for them. The subcontractor disclosure laws limit and Lasky does have their own pavement equipment, so they could be paving it themselves. Subcontractor disclosure laws basically limit the contractor that they need an approval to switch subcontractors once they put it down in paper. It doesn't say that if they say they're going to do it themselves and want to hire somebody, we basically have to bless that also because they're saying they're going with themselves, but it doesn't say they can't hire somebody else to pave it for them. If that makes sense. There is. An example is they have to be within a quarter inch of line and grade. We have and we will monitor compaction on the our contract documents, say that we will hire, which will likely be S H N. to monitor compaction of the asphalt and that type of thing, but this particular roadway, although we've had some lumpy roadways before, a lot of that's matching existing. In this case, we're paving curve to curve for the most of it, where we're not having to match a roadway that's already dipping. So we should get us another paving project out of it. It's from twelfth court. This is just from Madrona Court, excuse me, not twelfth court, where we, as you know, we changed Benny's paving so that we didn't have to tear out what the waterboard put in. So it's been paved to Madrona Court. And we're going to leave part of the strip we did last year. We actually paved twelve feet wide. We're going to trim it back to eight feet in width and pave up both sides. So this is in essence from the community center to the intersection in Maine and Madrona, and then we'll have a patch, full lane width patch over our storm sewer, and then on Maine also a full lane width patch. That project was separated because of, we separated this because this involves sewer replacement, storm sewer replacement. And instead of having one contractor in to do the sewer and or do sewer and storm drain and then have another contractor paving it, which can create some issues on finger pointing, if somebody didn't prepare it well enough for my paving, that type of issue. We put this one out all in one contract.
You talked about PLC's game system. Progressive logic control, which is basically a computer that controls everything in the plant. Flow meters, full send information from those, and the SCA system is supervisory control and data acquisition. So it stores all the information from the PLC and we can control what the PLC tells the pumps, valves, flow meters. We communicate that way and make adjustments as needed. Right now, the basic, the PLC and SCA system we have is based on Windows Seven platform, which is no longer supported and virtually sixteen years old and probably, well, not probably, it will fail at some point. Don't know exactly when, but I don't sleep all night right now because of that. So we had two bids, one from TAG, which is the automation group, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, and Primex quote of thirty-six thousand, eighteen dollars. Based on my history with this type of thing, I would like to go with the thirty-six thousand dollar quote. Main reason is TAG is the automated group is going to replace the exact equipment that we have in place right now. And Primex is going to give us alarms. So we don't have to rely on Gold Coast monitoring to call us if there's alarm in the plant. And plus, in the future, Primex is set up so we can add more alarms, which we have sixty-some alarms in lift stations right now and twenty-four in the plant, and we get one alarm for the plant that says there's a problem in the plant. So we have to show up to figure out what's wrong. And once we get there, it will tell us what is wrong, but until we get there, we don't know that. And with the new with Primets, we know the computer login to SCA system and see exactly what's wrong and sometimes be able to correct the what's wrong without even going to the plant. Those two hours of paid time, somebody's good, go in and take care of it. I think it'll pay for itself in a few years.
The agenda item for the supplemental budget, we have to have the public hearing because we have a budget adjust adjustment that's more than ten percent of what was budgeted. And the first one is in the swimming pool improvement fund eleven. There was an additional capital outlay of fifteen thousand due to the unexpected boiler repair. The other one is in the parks improvement fund, and that was due to the increase of expenditure for the California oak ramp project, and the offset for that will be the the grant funding received from the Oregon Street Marine Board, Oregon State Marine Board, and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
And that occurred because we didn't expect the grant to be awarded in the project to look forward, but it did, so that's why it wasn't included in the question.
And those are just making the adjustments we talked about for the capital outlay and pool and in parks improvement. No, that is a different one. That's a whole different one. That is to authorize transfer, transfer of appropriations for the two thousand nineteen twenty budget year will be within the general fund. And we had extra expenditures in the city attorney line item due to the lawsuit. We had budgeted seventy-five thousand. I'm proposing to put an additional eighty-five thousand in there based on what we spent and what we will spend by the end of the year for a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Those funds would come out of twenty thousand out of administration that they have not spent, twelve thousand out of city hall expenditures, and fifty-three thousand out of contingency to cover the, cover that. It doesn't change the ending fund balance for the general fund, but it does move some dollars around. So this happens to be for the transient room tax fund, Fund Ten, and where they budgeted originally on that two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue. For the third quarter, we are at two hundred and eight thousand, so we know that we'll, we'll, we should probably exceed the two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So we need to recognize that additional revenue, and with that becomes an additional expenditure, which goes to the Coos Bay North End Visitor and Convention Bureau. So this is to take care of that, and we also had an additional expenses in other materials and services. We had a crack front window that needed to be replaced and the cash register. So and the hanging baskets were a little bit more, which also come out of that fund. So this is to recognize the revenue and those additional expenditures.
Yes, sir. As a result of the recent ballot measures restricting council authority to increase fees to no more than the cost of living given by the Social Security Administration, essentially places the city in a position where we will have to increase fees on a fairly regular basis as opposed to our past examples simply because of the, for lack of a better word, the volatility in the fees for cost of living given by the Social Security Administration. For example, last year it was zero. Actually, it's been zero for a couple of years off and on. This year it's allowed one point six percent. Next year, the feds are estimating less than one percent, point eight percent or less because of those factors. Staff believes it's important that the increase in fees become a more regular part of the city's budgeting and funding package. So in performance to limitations enclosed by the electors, the schedule that you have in front of you shows which fees we are proposing to increase by one point six percent, which is the maximum allowable by the measure. There are some that will have to take some time before they're eligible for expansion, and those are typically the building fees.
Well, we have a forty-five day notice to building codes agency. In other words, we're we're asking to raise all the fees. We're actually, and the state doesn't stipulate the building code fees. We're already below the current state's recommended fee schedule for in at least in the residential code, but we have a, the only difference we didn't bring in specifically before you at this time is we have a forty-five day notice. We have to get the building codes agency bring those forward.
Yes, sir. As we are proceeding to July one and the issue of reductions in available police services, along with our contractual obligations to the Perpwell Tribe as well as some other requirements. Staff is proposing that the city enter into a short-term near governmental agreement with the city of Coos Bay that will allow, among other things, the provision of services, continued services to the Perpwell Tribe. Staff is recommending a ninety-day contract. Coos Bay has given us the estimated impact of seventy-eight thousand dollars for both dispatch and police services for that timeframe. That is agreeable. We did ask the county for a cost estimate. The sheriff indicated that they did not have any deputies available for that kind of use as they are on military service was the response. They could do some dispatching, but they recommended just going to the city of Coos Bay for dispatching and police services. From the city of Coos Bay side, they indicate they typically have four people on duty and if necessary, three. And if necessary, they would add an additional person depending upon their workflows for covering their contractual agreement with the city.
What are the people we're gonna have on duty? Zero. For what time?
From eleven P M. to seven A M.
How many are we gonna have on during the day?
Most, most shifts will have two. Some will have three.
Was that we're always gonna have two? Can't hear that. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Most, most first and second shifts, day and afternoon shifts, will have two officers working. Some will have three.
So the seventy-eight thousand is, it's not, is it about where if there's a call they charge it?
No.
Not call for service?
No, it's not a call for service.
Just a flat seventy-eight thousand there. We'll make sure they're covered from eleven to seven at the at one specific location.
No.
Okay.
It will not go to YouTube, so we're gonna have to post it later. It won't connect. Tried multiple times. Got a street blocking application for Fourth of July for Sheridan Avenue between Clark and the alley between Lewis and Lombard. It's actually for my parents and friends down the street. Usually Third of July is big on that street, and there's tons of cars and people driving fast with all the kids outside, and this year we were going to do one for Third of July, but since no fireworks, we decided on the Fourth of July, and it has been signed off on by T. Kapelman and by Public Works. So fireworks and block party for all the neighbors. Sheridan between Clark and Lombard, the alley between Lombard and Lomas. Sheridan between Clark and Lombard, the alley between Lombard and Lewis.
Oh, you mean the, the cities?
Yeah.
Will have them posted.
Will get them up?
Yeah, will get them.
The discussion of current events, public change, do we want to talk about that?
Number three.
He, no, I'm sorry. No, actually. Yes, sir. Obviously, as the world is aware, there's been a lot of introspection being generated across the country and across the world with respect to equity and inclusion of potentially marginalized sections of our, of our public. And one of the issues that has come forward is should the city of North Bend also participate in at least expressing to our own community the city's stance on such things as equity and inclusion? And in that regard, I've supplied a number of items of information, different examples of equity inclusion statements for councils to review, and with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor Ian.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a minute and, or two or three, and discuss this with the council. I had some thoughts that I wrote down. With everything that's going on right now in the world, I feel like when you, if you don't say something, then that also makes a statement, and it's time for us to take a look at what that statement would be. Racism, hatred, and intolerances of differences, they know no boundaries. And the recent incidents that have occurred nationally now remind us of all of that. I believe it's extremely important for us to discuss this as a council and not remain complacent and silent on the other. So these are difficult conversations. I do not have all the answers, but I want to learn and seek for understanding. With respect to racism, hatred, and bigotry, I encourage the council to develop a plan for continued education. I know that there are the police force and the fire department already do some education. We want to encourage that to continue in all the city's departments, in the city employees, and even the council to address these challenges and help bring our community together. I feel that as leaders in the community, if we condemn all forms of hatred, bias, racism, and bigotry, and discrimination, and make a stance for social and racial injustice, that we can show support for tolerance and encourage a universal respect for all people. I took a look on our council website to see if I could find anything that speaks to this and what our current goals say and our vision. Our current council vision, it does say that the city of North Bend believes in itself, talks about being attractive and inviting and safe and livable, but it does not mention anything about equity and inclusion statements. So I think a long-term goal is that we need to really maybe take a look at some of those vision statements and goals that we have. But I wanted to at least take today to start the conversation about this.
Yeah, no, I think it's a valid piece from the sense of, I think was mentioned earlier, if you don't say anything about it, just that's sort of your statement is what's going on. And it's a city that believes in ourselves, but we also believe in our people. And we, we as a nation are a set of immigrants, and we use that diversity in skills, background, and experience to be as successful as we can. And, and I guess a little bit of something is, has, has, have we done anything negative or whatever? No, not really at all. But it's a little bit like the guy that got married, told his wife he loved her at the ceremony, hasn't mentioned it since. And so what she asked about is, well, if I ever change my mind, I'll tell you. Well, that's valid to a certain extent, but I think it's important to maybe reinforce the issues that we do look for diversity in our area. We do welcome everybody that wants to play in the game. We're stronger if we do have everybody that has different opinions and that being part of making things done. I, I think we've seen that in some of the issues here lately where the mayor actually offered somebody the opportunity to be part of the decision-making body, and they backed off from it. But the idea would be you could influence things if you wanted to actively participate. And that's the type of thing that, that I believe that we want to be recognized for. And say, this is, this is the way that we want to live as a city and put things together. Yeah, I think we're at the beginning stage of that. I mean, Karen said a lot of interesting things here that you could probably carve down to come up with a succinct statement of a paragraph or two, that here's what we're focused on, here's who we are, and we look for all of you to be part of the team. But I, I see it as a beginning of a timely process and, you know, to use the materials we've been given and go ahead. I think that'd be fine, plus anybody else that wanted to. We can bring that back to another work session. Thank you.
Have the work session, probably talk about yourself. That would not just Park's Commission, Park's Commission already located. I'd like to see it done before us.
When is the next Parks Committee meeting?
We haven't had them. Every other month, right?
Do you ever have joint meetings with the Park Committee and the Council, even with that?
They do it on the side?
I propose having, you know, either inviting the Parks Committee to the council meeting. I'd like to hear a discussion from them on it as well. Is there any new information that we didn't have last time we came to talk to council?
I'd like to see it on the ground. I mean, when I saw this picture that was kind of more expansive than I thought it is.
Brian, a question back there. Brian, how you doing? Was there any discussion of an alternate place for the works?
No, there really isn't any other spot. And, you know, I can understand, yes, we do need to take it back to the park support, but I can guarantee you that we're gonna have a group that are gonna be opposed no matter what. We're gonna have a group that is gonna be poor no matter what. We have all the meetings in the world you want. It's gonna come down to probably to the council to have to make that final decision. Let's go with it. We don't. But personally, I'm in favor of it. But if it didn't work out, and I wouldn't be in favor of it if I didn't think it worked out. But in the longevity, if it didn't work out, then we go to Plan B. I talked to a lady today that came by the office and was discussing the frisbee golf course. She was home by another person, was told by another person. I showed her the map, she goes, oh, that's not what I was told. So it's gonna come down to council really to make this final decision if you want it there or not. But I agree, we need to, we're not gonna change their mind, and they're not gonna change this all time. So it's gonna be a tough choice for you guys.
I do like the idea about going out to the site itself. At least see what the footprint looks like.
It's all on the perimeter of the park, so none of it, none of it's in the park itself with the playground and walkway. There's nothing, only one. And that's the only one that's gonna be in the park. The rest are back on the perimeter of the park.
And for answer's question, like hole number six, seven, and nine, and possibly hole number five, those are in areas that have been cleared out that there's absolutely no activity in right now. And there's a lot of people that opposed, but we started cleaning this out too.
Oh, I remember. They, they didn't have places for their brush anymore. But I'm just saying, that, that, all, that whole area which the trees have been planted and all that other stuff in there, you know, the ones that you planted, I don't know, we all planted.
And I'm just saying, that, that portion of the park right now is pretty much unused.
It really is unused unless you want to walk your dog, and that's basically, and it's never full. I mean, I'm there day in and day out. Some of the letters that were written, I agree with them, so my dog, it's not like people are packing there all day long, walking the trail. And they're active. Part of that's certain parks are for recreation and for fun things, not just a walk path, and that's it. So. And, you know, the people that are heading this up, they're more than willing to work with anybody to make this work. So.
They made that very clear.
They made it very clear. They're great people. What's that, near? No, I mean, you're gonna have one or two bad eggs in every, every activity.
Well, it's golf, for God's sake.
But it's free, so it's not as. But if you see the amount of people I, I mean, we have young people, we have middle-aged people, we have old people like me out there playing frisbee golf as a family. A lot of them don't throw that far. You know, I mean, I'd be lucky right now, Mary, to throw one at you.
I don't know much about frisbee golf, but like looking at the chart here, like is, do you throw it from one and like how many throws?
Well, most of these are like par threes.
Okay.
So you'll throw one, the really good throwers will land right there by the basket. Like someone, maybe you might be better than me, but it might take me two or three times to get there.
If you get these five or six or seven people and your friends, you want to come meet, you know, like have them walk the course with you.
I mean, since it ultimately related up with us, which it will, you know, that way, let's go.
I think we need to invite them and look at this situation as a whole.
On the ground.
On here, on here. And if they don't show up, then they don't have an opinion.
And we can mark them with where the tee-off box is gonna go, where the basket's gonna go. It'd make it easier for the council.
That would be very helpful.
Right, that'd be perfect.
That would be very helpful.
We even bring a couple, you know, disc balls, not frisbees anymore, they're disc balls.
Well, I understand that, but the frisbees are lighter.
Yeah.
From a lawyer's perspective, that, that's an issue. Most things are harder to watch. Somebody slices their shot in the third hole there, maybe in the baseball thing, for example. I think that's an example that we may go with, that just missed situations down there.
That people have the head with the baseball.
The third hole goes back to two of them. The yellow is that.
You said that yellow dotted what?
The yellow, that's the tail of the course. The yellow where the tee off. They gotta be here though, where the basket's gonna be.
Okay.
How many times is it gonna pay off?
But you'll stay long, recreational immunity. Right. You can't, they can't bring the suit against you. Well, they can bring the suit against you. You have recreational immunity.
So, but Brian, you're saying they can't.
Well, no, I'm saying they can, whether they be successful or not. They have to have a really good lawyer like we have.
I thought we were supposed to win.
And they have to overcome the state law for recreational immunity.
Right.
So that.
So basically, there do, you're asking for trouble. So if you get scared.
You'd say the same thing about baseball.
Same thing with the softball.
Or you're mixing, you're mixing these.
Yeah.
You don't have, it's not mixed down where it is now.
Your brain could fall off the swing set. Yeah, same thing.
You shouldn't have to deal with super city.
Maybe the city should sit over and swing instead of fireball.
So this is a draft? Would you say this is a draft?
It's all a draft. You know, I would, I would suggest that, Brian, you get hold of the golf, the disc golf folks and tell them, you know, the project's on hold, but we want to walk with them and with anybody in the neighborhood to get a better feel for the project.
And look at some other options that maybe.
To begin with, we're gonna look at what's there.
No?
So, yeah, the thirteenth work session?
Chief, what's the, what's the status on drinking in the park? Very damn, don't do it.
It's gonna rank you a citation.
You can't drink on unlicensed premises.
You can't what?
You're subject to a citation. You cannot drink on unlicensed premises.
I mean, the pictures that Marty put through, there were liquor bottles or cans or whatever throughout this area. We sure don't want that happening through the whole park. It's kind of confined now, so there's another issue. It's kind of confined now, so there's another issue.
But I would like to, you know, we walk through it every day to pick up garbage and if there was that many, we would be retired by now. There isn't that much garbage when we walk through the Windsor Golf Course. We have trash cans.
I was going to say, there's trash cans available.
Yeah, and maybe utilize them. The old days, yes, it was a party place. But there's a new group that has come in, I think the younger ones, side-stay home, family computers or whatever they do, I don't know. But there's a new group in there and they're actually cleaning up the Windsor, pouring new pads at their cost, fixing up at their cost, it's not costing the city a dime.
Gee, how many calls do you give to the golf course? Figure of two. Where is it?
One every couple of years.
If we all get, we get the three people there listening, parks committee, the opposition, us, they believe that, and you're the thing, I think that's.
The perfect scenario would be that property below the bridge used to be what, Al Pierce property? Because that's wide open, it's huge area of it. I don't know the laws now or if they would be tempted if a group put that in there and maintained it for them, but. Or no, well, they, they might work for this.
Do they like the trees around it or do they want a big open area?
They like both. That's why they incorporate the trees and the hills. Some of the big tournaments, they have no trees. It's just, some of the tournaments, they have a lot of obstacles like skill. I have neither one of them, so.
Can I ask a question on 15? What happens after 90 days? Can we get this up every 20? Who talked about that? So do we set a date when it was taken? One? That's one. That would be what? For weekend, July 15th.
Will we go over to the park first and then we'll be meeting afterwards? But will that be 13th or 15th?
I think it's just an information gathering, so we can do that.
But, nothing other work session items?
Well, there'll be a council meeting the next night, so it's 20 as well, I think.
Rover, Brian barbecue's afterward.
The order of when about the four, go to the six. Yeah, 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 you know.
Put on the sex? Yeah. Regular work session? That'd be Friday. Stay out this meeting on the Monday. Then we'll couple, do the regular work session on Monday and then six would be on Monday.
Six would be Monday.
That's the date.
The work session date.
After 4th of July weekend.
So we're going over to the park on the, we're at the work session and we'll have a in-house work session on Wednesday afternoon.
No, we have to do the regular one before.
I would think you'd want both sides over there to see what is the proposal and then come back and talk about here, not talk out there. I think you'd be wasting time to talk over there.
It'd take a while, isn't it? That tour, it's going to take a while.
Uh, probably, well, depends how much talk it is, 45 minutes probably, walk it.
Yeah, start that over there at four. Maybe come there and go over these businesses and things. Yes, the, what is that, the month? We need to talk back to the parks board.
You want them there, I can back them.
Move back everybody.
That was a good case.
And then, I don't know how we contact these people who are in the opposition.
Yeah, your address.
All their information is on the sheet, okay, we have all that, okay. So that's going to be.
4:30 to 15, right? How is four?
Or four.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock kind of there?
Larry will.
Yes.
And we'll leave there.
At Terryville parking lot.
Okay. Perfect.
Any other questions? For other, any other other business? Okay.
Well, you heard from Mrs. Woods. This is a reimbursement authorization for the first part of their phase four redevelopment for $26,167, uh, 197.69. I attached at the last page kind of a summary of the drawdown and the costs and you will see that they agreed that phase four would be urban renewal would be on the hook for $60,000. So they're asking for 26, I would expect before they move on to phase five that we will see another request to bring it up to $60,000.
It's making an inch from 300 grand they received from the county.
No, they didn't. No, they didn't.
Well, of course, they'll commit it and it's going to come out. It would be nice to say, it's a good issue. They don't start building these things when you got money for it.
Yeah, so staff would recommend authorization. We have the cancelled checks from Park Need. Same that they didn't pay.
We have the, we got the, your crew ready, right? When we get approached that?
That's in your executive session.
Okay, and now we'll move to executive session.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Beside improvement, I said we're going to talk about it.
Oh, you did that ordinance itself, right?
Well, yeah, I'm talking about what the heck's happening. I read the, the print information that we hand out and it says $25,000 per year for fiscal year. That's what it says. I have read the ordinance, that's what the information that we print on the website is. $25,000 per year, fiscal year.
For a cabinet?
Nope.
No.
For business.
And then does it have a line in there about discretion?
No. Not in the, not in the information that's to the public. I printed it off. I don't have a copy at the computer, but I printed it off and it did not. Now, the ordinance may say that, but not the, I honestly thought it was $25,000 one-time only, but after reading it, it is for fiscal year. So if we're going to apply by our program that we've got printed out, then I have no problem with coming back in a year or so and, you know, next year and getting another $25,000. I guess if that's the system, then that's what we want. It'd be nice if we had it down so we knew what it was instead of hotluck.
Well, in all due respect, these individuals come to the board and they present a plan that says, this is what we want to do, this is why we want to do it in stages, this is how much we think it's going to cost, and the board approves it. If the board didn't want to approve it, then that should be the time when you say, no, thank you. We appreciate it, but for the following reasons, we believe we're going to stick with the minimum.
Then what we need to do is get that publicized so people have it. I thought, I sold my building to dual insurance and basically says, what can I get from the city? I said $25,000 bucks. So she did the north side, didn't bother with any money because she's saving it so she could use it for the front. Well, she could have taken 25 there, 25 for the front and another year, another 25. But she doesn't know that because it's not public information, it gets in your mind, but not my mind and not their customer's mind. That's what's got me puzzled a little bit. And Sven said he came in and talked to you and you were the one that suggested the address. That was his comment. I can't prove right, I can't prove wrong, but that is a comment to me. We had a nice conversation. And if we wanted to have a hotluck project, then throw it out and let everybody come in and discuss it. If not, go buy your $25,000, which is published in our, on our website.
I don't think we did consent to the application. I know the odd fellow clearly got $25,000, that's a pretty good sized building, also had five presses. So I know it's still March.
But they never asked for more.
No, and, well, she didn't ask you. They never asked for more because they didn't know they could.
The others, the others didn't know and they asked.
Well, let's clarify.
Nothing, not a problem. You know, the purpose is to increase the tax values of, of the properties, so.
Great, let's clarify.
That's the purpose.
Whether we give them $25,000 or $100,000.
Yeah.
Just clarify.
Yeah.
But what would it take to clarify it? Is this something that we would do in an urban renewal meeting and suggest a resolution proposal?
Absolutely.
And we, and there's timeframes of like, when you do that, like we can't just do that tomorrow, right?
Well, you have to advertise.
Correct.
Okay. We have a goal to do that.
They have a work session on it as well. It's disgusting. So we get everybody's ideas clarified.
Certainly. Bring it to our next work session.
Well, no, that's, that's after.
Not the next one.
Not the next one, right after that. Because we're dispelling.
It was the one we prepared.
Yes.
And we could make changes.
Certainly. I guess.
And that's a running out of dollars.
We have $4 million in watch.
Yeah, but it was still a pretty pricey project to be selling.
Okay, so you'll bring us back something.
Yes, sir, I shall.
After next week.
After.
And then we'll over.
Certainly.
Make changes and whatever we sit back. Okay.
Amen.
The city of Northland Council meeting executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602A, which allows the council meeting executive session to be scheduled in front of the public officer's employee's down there recording. Left standing for news media and this lady's staff will be allowed to come in and get some attention. Members of the audience are asked to leave for them. I presented.